Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the special meeting of the Wallingford Inland and Wetlands Water Course Commission to order. The date is Wednesday, January 15, 2020, and the time is 7:00 PM. Will you join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Nick?
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
Deborah Phillips.
Michael Caruso.
Robert Simon.
Jennifer Passeretti. Erin O'Hare, environmental planner.
Okay. We've got a couple of minutes to approve. If we start with the November 18 meeting, is there any comments regarding the November 18 meeting? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the meetings of the special, the minutes of the special meeting on November 18, 2019, as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Not a call for a vote. Okay, Nick? Yes. Mike?
Yes.
And Ally is the only other one that was here, so that constitutes approval, correct? Present. Dave Parent was present. Nick, Mike, Ally, and Erin. Erin can't vote. Dave's not here. Alan's not, Ally's not here. Well, I think, I don't think you need a majority to approve minutes.
Sorry, I don't know. Robert's rules, I don't know that part.
Until otherwise said so, approved. Minutes are approved.
Yeah, but that's two.
Okay, did you vote?
Yes.
Minutes approved. Okay. Now, the...
So what vote, who voted yes?
Nick and Debbie.
Debbie and Jim.
Nick and Michael.
Mike Caruso.
Nick Kern.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Now, the minutes of December 4th, this is a regular meeting of December 4th. Is there any corrections or modifications to the minutes of December 4th?
I have some, actually. On page six, it says Ms. Jen...
Wait a minute, wait a second. Page six, whereabouts?
It's the third, fourth paragraph down. The paragraph starts, Ms. O'Hare said that her 16 questions, okay? It's in that paragraph. Okay. It's, actually, it's the next paragraph. Ms. Jen Benno. Do you see where it says Ms. Jen Benno?
Yes.
That implies that she was actually here. She wasn't. So it should say, "A report by Ms. Jen Benno was handed out." Okay? So it just says, "Ms. Jen Benno, soil scientist, said she sent her report," or whatever. No. It should read, "A report by Ms. Jen Benno, soil scientist," and it should say, "was handed out."
Okay.
All right. And the other correction was page 14, under the vote.
Hang on a minute. Okay.
The, okay, under the vote, it says, "Ms. O'Hare sent an official from EPA." The next sentence should appear there. So it should say, "Chair Vitale asked Ms. O'Hare for an update on the Andrews case. Ms. O'Hare said an official from the EPA made." You understand, it just has to be put in front.
So they gotta, you gotta just change the order of those two?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, the paragraph should start, "Chair Vitale." That's how that paragraph should start.
Okay.
And that, that'd be it.
All right. Any other corrections or modifications? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion with corrections to approve or deny this, this report, minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting on December 4, 2019, be accepted with the corrections.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I got three. Jennifer?
Yes.
Four. And now it'll be five. Okay? Okay, good. All right. Going on to old business. Application A 19-11.2, 425 South Cherry Street.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jeff Dewey with BL Companies, representing for 425 South Cherry Street. As you probably recall from the last meeting, there was a few comments that needed to be addressed from the environmental planner. Most were erosion control issues, which we have addressed. I would be happy to go over them if you want me to. And also, I'll segue before I get into that. There was one drainage design concern. Basically, there was underlying sand underneath the existing soil on site, and we were asked to find a way to integrate the infiltration systems and tie them into that sand layer. So if I may, what we did is, we put stone trenches. And I apologize, this is not to scale. These stone trenches are five feet wide, and then there's, they're 11 feet on center, so there'll be six feet in between, then another five-foot trench, and then six feet in between. So basically, both systems have these. We found sand down at varying depths, so we went down to the deepest depth, which was roughly elevation 49. So these will be into the soil layer, not just on the top of them. And both systems have them, which greatly increased the infiltration rate. So, and I know I hate to pass out numbers, excuse me while I passes out. There's a lot of numbers in here, but basically, the main concern was infiltration. So if we go to page three or five, and in the table, you can see, I have the overall volumes, but basically, for each infiltration system, infiltration system number two, which was for roof areas only, previously as it was designed, the time for the system to drain was approximately 36.5 hours. And that was, if you look, it's the fifth row down in that column. So with these connections to the sand layer, it went from 36.5 hours down to nine hours. So that greatly increased how fast this system is going to drain out. Turned out to be a great idea.
Appreciate it.
Yes, and as you can see in the other system, it went from 70 hours to infiltrate the entire system down to 17 hours. So, yeah, that's, I think that's going to work out really well with the infiltration systems. And again, the details on the plan, we've added the details and the proper callouts on the plan. They are 11 feet on center and 5 feet wide, so it's a pretty significant area of the stone trenches. We didn't want to put it completely underneath these units because we didn't want to have problems with the constructibility of the system. It's hard to get the stone trench nice and level, and plus the stability of the trench because we are going to have vehicles running over the top of it. And on top of that, the other revisions to the plans were basically erosion control measure issues that we worked out with the environmental planner. A lot of them, most of them, had to do with the temporary sediment basin. So what we did is, we included all the erosion control measures on the demo plan, which is sheet EC1, which I have full-size sheets, I will pass out to you in a moment, and adjustments of the temporary sediment trap over here, and providing a stone swale essentially to get this, as the water weeps out of the temporary sediment trap, it has a stone base to run over to get to the road instead of running over gravel and what have you. And if, hold on one second, I'll pass out the plans.
Are they in this latest packet that you have here?
Yes, they are.
So I don't think we need another copy, do we?
No, Erin's supposed to say no.
Well...
I think, well, this does, but I think you don't have the actual stone, you have the adjustments in this basin. So just play it safe, I'll pass them out if you give me one moment, please.
Excuse me, Jeff, could you tell me what sheets they, the commission just got?
Yes, I'd be happy to. I'm going to open this up. So the revised sheets that you got are the sheet set, is sheet EC1, DM1, which is the demo sheet, EC2, which is the note sheet, and EC3, which is the erosion control detail sheet.
Thank you.
So basically, what we did is, we relocated the sediment trap, so it's out of the way so they can completely install the drainage system and most of this parking lot and still have this be functional. We relocated the outlet. It's basically a stone weir that allows water to weep through a berm wall. So you have your wet layer. So if you look at the detail that's on sheet EC3, or just look right here, it's much easier to see, you have a wet storage volume that's actually into the existing ground. And then anything over above the wet storage is dry storage. So basically, it weeps out through this stone wall or berm wall, and it has an overflow weir in it at the top for larger storm events. And then it has a stone pad that'll drain all the way to the catch basin located in the street to prevent any transport of additional sediments and so forth from the water leaving the basin. Additional features included adding some hay bale rows around the discharge point of the sediment trap and closer to the catch basin that's in the street. And we added some additional erosion control, some silt sacks on additional catch basins on the other side of Penn Road and around the entire site, some additional catch basins over here on the other side of South Cherry Street to provide additional protection. There were some notes added to the plans. Sheet EC2, basically, they state requiring that a sediment accumulation marker be installed in the sediment trap so the contractor is aware of when the depth gets to a foot, and when the depth gets to a foot within side the sediment trap, it's on the contractor to clean the trap out and bring it back to its original design grade.
Okay. Commissioners, any comments, questions?
It's setup you put in with the stone underneath the, yeah. Is there any chance that this is going to create, because you're disturbing the soil, it's going to make it a weak point, and the groundwater's going to come up into that and keep it as a wet bottom?
There was no groundwater encountered in any of the holes, and we excavated as far as 10 feet. So, and there was no groundwater encountered in any of the holes. So we don't think there's any groundwater that we will hit.
You're going to, you're going to develop this site, and before this site was developed, there were certain times you could go down there in the spring or on a hard rain, and that area would be flooded. So you're taking that flood storage capacity area away by putting a structure in or whatever you're going to do there. What's going to happen to that water that used to come and settle there and then dissipate into the soil? But now, all of a sudden, you've vanished that. Where's that stormwater going to go?
Basically, so what we've done is, are you talking way back when it was a sand?
Well, when the holes were there before the town started to fill it in.
Okay, um, when it was, there must have been a tighter layer of soil on top of the sand because it's my understanding underneath the top layers of the soil was a sand layer, which basically would probably infiltrate almost all the water that would reach that area. So if there was a tighter layer of soil on top of that, that would cause the ponding and stuff. And it would take a while for the water to get through that silty layer to get to the sand, and once it got to the sand, it would infiltrate rather quickly, as you can tell by the calculations. So what we're doing is, we're not really taking it away. In a sense, we're making it more so by paving it, but by putting in the infiltration systems, and even more so with these stone connection trenches, we're reintroducing the runoff to that sand layer that has a real fast infiltration rate and will absorb most of the storm events.
So in all your testing out there, there was no signs of groundwater?
No, sir.
Debbie?
No questions.
Mike? No questions. Rob?
No questions.
Jen?
No questions.
Erin?
Okay, I have a few questions, Jeff. I saw some of these revisions, they came in on January 10. So, Commissioner, I put my comments based on what you got handed out tonight, my comments and review of that, and my comments went into the second environmental, the third environmental planners' report on this that went out in your last packet. It's dated January 10. That was my environmental planners' report that summed it all up and also took note of everything you're looking at now in the sheets and provide a bunch of conditions of approval. But what I want to clarify from Jeff is, I did notice that the sediment trap shrank, the size of the thing shrank in the last few weeks.
And to clarify, it did not, it's holding the same volume. What I did is, because you were concerned about the grading, so typically, DEP doesn't require sediment traps to be engineered. But for clarity, so you could see the elevations, is I added additional contours so you could actually see in plan view the difference of the wet and the dry storage. Before, we really only were showing the dry storage with three contours. So now I added, again, the additional contours to clarify exactly what elevations this needs to be built to.
So the aerial size of the basin didn't shrink?
No, it's, actually, it has about the same volume, if not more, than previously.
I'm not talking about the volume. It was, yeah, the number changed. When you, on this plan, EC1, if you look on the far left, it used to, it says bottom area 34 by 69.
What we did is, we added contours. So the inside, as though it looks like it shrunk, but basically, we added additional contours.
Got it. Got it, got it, got it, got it. So what I'm recommending, we did get, I should mention, in the packet, gosh, a week ago, you got comments from the new town engineer, Allison Kapuschinsky, and also, then you got some in the more recent, in the last packet, you got further comments from the town engineer, and that'll be taken up in planning and zoning, but I just wanted you to see what she was concerned with. Although she is out of step in that, the plans that we have haven't gone to planning and zoning yet. So she'll be getting more updated plans later. So as far as the motions, maybe we need to go through, if you're of a mind, Mr. Chairman, with Jeff, which of these have been corrected by the latest plans that you were handed out tonight, and which remain? Most of them remain, most of my suggested condition of approval remain.
Well, well, a lot of them, I see are just things that would normally take place in, as they progress through their development stage.
Right, yeah.
So I don't know what really needs to be changed. Everything seems to be under control. Do you agree to these 10 recommendations by the environmental planner?
Yes, I do. Some of them, actually, they are noted on the note sheet as well, but as when I was speaking with the environmental planner, it was very important for her to be clarified as conditions as opposed to be buried in notes, which made sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, storage area on site for supply of hay bales, silt fence, contact her before we start construction. Heavy rains, be prepared for a possible event. So I think these are all in here. I don't know where we have to go over them.
Okay, maybe we should touch on just number nine, because that, that is a little different. That is an off-site impact, and the, one of the regular, this, this application has two regulated activities. One is the creation of surface area, and to address that, the engineer has provided these sand infiltration trenches, among other things. The two infiltration units help, and then with this special sand infiltration trenches as suggestion by you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. But the other regulated activity was the potential for transport of sedimented flows into the wetlands that exist on Oliver Creek Road. I'm not worried about it after the site is built. I'm just worried about the potential for introduction of sediment during construction. If everything goes well, it won't happen. But if there's a big rain, that's what it's, number nine is, just to take note, that the permittee at that time will be asked to deal with that if I find all sorts of red sand in the marsh on Oliver Creek Road.
Well, I think he agrees to that.
Yes.
They're taking responsibility for it.
Yes, but I'm just highlighting it because it's one of the two regulated activities you're going to be asked to approve tonight.
Okay, if the, any other comments from the commission? Then, as her recommendation on the front page, page one, will determine the significance of this activity.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the application number A 19-11.2, 425 South Cherry Street, be deemed not a significant impact activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 19-11.2, 425 South Cherry Street, be...
Be approved.
Be approved with the conditions set forth in the environmental planner's report of January 10, 2020, numbers one through 10.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made in second, and any discussion? Again, call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And I do want to thank you for that modification to the infiltration system. Okay, there's nothing in the new business category. There is a receipt of new application. Just because we're so early ahead of schedule, we can, is there anything to talk about, discuss about it?
Well, you and I have talked about that. They've requested administrative approval, and we've been over that, and you had indicated that it was a good candidate for administrative approval. It did, the report on it went out to everybody in the, in the last packet, I believe, either that or the one before, as to what's going on there. It's just very minor encroachment into the upland review area with drainage swales, but the drainage swales are good things. I'm glad that there are drainage swales there. It just said the edge of the drainage swale went over into wetland jurisdiction. That's why they, they came in with an application.
And we gave them administration approval.
Yeah, I should put a date on there, but yes.
Okay. Interesting ever source is, what are they doing? They're rebuilding the main power line across the east Wallingford. That'll be an interesting project.
They're replacing the wood towers with metal towers. It's up by the airport, that area.
By the airport?
Yeah, it's by the airport.
I thought they were also working on the east side of Wallingford also.
I know they're doing vegetation management on the east side.
Pond Hill Road, they're replacing everything up there.
Yeah, Pond Hill Road.
Coming right through.
Yeah. It's up through Traditions Golf Course, all through there.
Well, that's what we talked about like two years ago, and they're just finishing up, correct? I mean, that's part of that whole project down there.
I don't know, I'm not...
Cutting the trees. You're talking about, Mike, cutting the trees?
No, they're pulling the poles or replacing them.
No, they're replacing the poles.
Going on for months.
Okay.
They're worried, I think, I heard that they were worried about chainsaws cutting the poles down and knocking the grid out. That's why they're changing everything to metal poles.
They started at 150, and they're working towards northward.
Yeah.
Are you kidding?
Maybe you ought to go check them out.
Cranes and helicopters all over the place.
Helicopters, too?
Yeah.
Oh, string and a wire.
They broke ground on Oak Street.
I'm sorry?
They broke ground on Oak Street.
Yeah, they just started, right, yeah.
They're on both sides.
Okay, violations, there's a lot of things that are kind of status quo. Number one, 988 East Center Street, that's in limbo until May, I think.
Yes, it actually was approved by planning and zoning on Monday night, but as far as the plantings are concerned, yes, the plantings, the notice violation will be on there until they get their planting squared away.
Application 16-2.1, I thought that was under control, that you weren't changing anything?
It's under control, except he has to do his wetland placards.
52 Hanover Street, he's been working with you right along?
Yeah, that's good.
So that's fine. 1245 Old Colony in Quinnipiac.
I just spoke with that engineer, Mr. Amatea. I spoke to him last week, I spoke to him today. He is, they're picking up the wetland flags. They had Scott Stevens of Soil Science and Environmental Services go out there and flag the wetlands and put up flags, and his office is picking it up. He says, "I'll have the drawing on Tuesday." Finally, we'll get that drawing.
Okay, 1103 Old Colony. Clearing?
That's the one I'm working with Janice to put the notice of violation on the land records, the little glitches that it was traded, it was sold to Country Mart, same people, different entity, Country Mart.
Surprise, surprise. Application 18-12.2, Roland Technologies.
Yes, this notice of violation was issued on December 30. It went out in your packet. They're here tonight. I've been working with them since November on this, so, well... Um, I've been working with them since November on this, so, well.
Well.
It first, it first came to light of an issue in November, end of November, and then we've been working through December. And I drove by it today, and it looks pretty good, but I think they might want to come and talk about this. We have the, um, project engineer sitting in the front here.
Well, if they would like to, that's fine. It's just that it should never have got to that part. The violation started back in the summertime, really. Yes, sir.
Good evening. For the record, John Gable with Connecticut Consulting Engineers. We are the project engineers for, uh, three twenty Barnes Road.
You gotta talk into the microphone.
With me tonight is, uh, Greg Mastriano.
Greg Mastriano, Superintendent with Milestone Construction Services.
Frank Ferriola, President, Milestone Construction.
So, uh, as Erin stated in her, her environmental planner's report, we've been working with her office to address the violations. And we came up with a, a plan showing the existing conditions at December thirty-first, and what we were proposing to do afterwards, that were different from the original approval back in February. Uh, I don't know if you want to.
What do you, what do you, what's going on here, Erin? Are they looking for modification to the permit? What, what, are they just, this is modification to the violation? I mean, what, what's, what is their procedure here tonight? What is their request?
Okay, of course, they, we want them to correct all the violations. Uh, non-compliance, in this case, it's non-compliance with the permit. Um, so to correct those violations. They've been working over the last month to correct those violations. Um, if.
To the existing permit?
To the existing permit. The terms and conditions of the existing permit. Um, technically, they should, if it was done the right way, they would have come in in November, in October, and asked for a modification to permit. That would have been the correct procedure. So I don't know if you want to have them come in with a modification to permit application at this late date, or just go ahead and, and correct what's going on. The, the little, the problem is, it's just not like silt got in some wetlands or something, what could be corrected. The, the main issue, they have a drive, a third driveway. I mean, that's a bit, that's an obvious difference from the plan that was approved. The plan that was approved had two driveways at this point. Now they got three. So, you know, that's obvious. But in terms of violations that would create erosion and sediment into the wetlands and into the stream, that's, that's the most important thing. And they've pretty much got that under control now.
But what they've got in control are, is that addressing the original permit and conditions of the original permit? Because you, you've got this situation that you've got, you've basically got a whole new plan out there.
Well, uh, maybe thirty percent new. I, I don't know what, what percent.
Plan. I, I just don't know, I'm glad you fellas are here. But you're, you're, you're taking an existing plan, and we've got this violation, and we're going to change the plan.
I'd like to expand on that, just to give you clarification. The, I'm not saying it's a minor change, but it's, uh, the existing driveway that's to the site was kept open for a construction entrance. We have a new driveway. I can just show you on the plan that you have in your packet.
Bring the easel out a little further. And make sure you use the microphone.
Okay, uh, the plan, the entrance that was not part of the original plan is right here. That's the original entrance to the, uh, the back area. We kept, we want to keep this open as a construction entrance for the phase, third phase. Uh, this entrance here and this entrance here is for the, uh, the current employees to come in and out to the site without, uh, affecting the, uh, construction site. So that's why I wanted to modify the original approval to include, to include this with the, uh, construction entrance. And this pile here had moved from here to here. That's the only difference.
All right, so the, the only issue that's going on here, there's a temporary third driveway. Nothing else is changed. Boundaries haven't changed. The stockpile is moved in. But that's it.
And then we'd like to request, uh, this area in here had SNE control measures around. There's an existing sign here right now. Uh, I believe this portion, I inspected this the other day, it's stabilized. They'd like to remove some of the silt fencing here so they can, people can see the sign.
What, the Roland Technology sign, or just the construction sign?
Yeah, no, it's a Roland Technology sign. I asked Erin to take a look. It was, uh, already been, I mean, not loaned, but there was hay and fabric down already. It's a concrete, uh, island here, landscaped, but it's just hay and, uh, there were control measures.
Well, oh.
Oh, there was, uh, hay and erosion blankets on that area.
Erin, do you have any comment on that?
Um, yeah, I did look at it. It's fine. That's, that, I don't have issue with that.
What, they can take down the silt fence?
The one that's wrapped around, close to their name sign, yes. It's not a problem. They, actually, I saw it today, tonight, I went by, and they already have the, um, hay mulch and erosion, uh, control blanket. It is, it's fine. I have no issue with that. The biggest thing, the, they were moving forward very quickly with their new addition without, uh, adequate, without any stormwater controls on the western side of the property. That's when I issued the notice of violation, is, uh, you know, you can't do that, you know? Maybe they could explain why they did that, but you, you gotta, there's steps. We approve steps. There's a sequence of construction, and they didn't do the sequence of construction. So that's, that was on the western side of the property. On the eastern side of the property, there was this enormous stockpile that was breaching occasionally and causing problems. Some of it was in the town right away. The good news is, I went there tonight, and it's all gone. It's disappeared, it's all gone. They've got the hay mulch and the erosion control blankets, and then around that, they have a silt fence. So that is just great. Um, is the oil grid separator in yet? I don't, that was about to go in.
I inspected it yesterday. Uh, this is like ninety-five percent complete. Uh, the site is pretty much stabilized already. That was my main concern once the NOV was issued, uh, that the site be stabilized immediately. So we had, we're actually meeting with, uh, Milestone, uh, to implement the control measures. And, uh, here we are.
When you say ninety-five percent, what, what's not done?
I think some, uh, there's one part that they need to add some stone, and that's it. I believe, unless, unless you guys fix that.
Greg Mastriano with Milestone, that is correct. The, the structure is in place. Uh, backfill is up about seventy-five or eighty percent. And there's just a little bit of stone, uh, directing, if you will, into the completed infiltration basin that will be done by about noon tomorrow. The infiltration basin was a long lead item for us with a custom cast through United.
Okay, because I know there's a storm coming on Saturday, so I wanted to make sure we had a contingency plan in place in the event it wasn't completed. But we just had some slight modifications to just keep the entrance open so we can allow, uh, traffic to, uh, employees to come in and out without any obstruction from construction equipment, and they can continue to work in this area.
Is the end result that that driveway is going to stay there, or are you going to just?
No, that, the end result would be that this driveway will be, once everything's completed here, this will be curbed, loam and seeded, and these basins will be converted with manhole tops.
So really, it looks like it's just a field, uh, field change for
Correct.
for construction work.
So, that's, yeah, exactly. I don't feel it's a big modification. It's just made it, made it more, it was a transition from phase, phase two to phase three.
Erin, why did it take so long for us to catch this? You go out after, you go out the day before every storm and check all these sites? You just, you just catch it now, nine months later?
Um, I, well, no, it's a longer story than that. I was driving to a meeting at the Park and Recreation Center and saw that they had started. They were into phase two. I mean, they had not notified me in the summer, had not posted their twenty thousand dollar bond, and all of a sudden, they had, they were past phase one, where there was a house, if you remember, on three forty Barnes Road, there was a little house. Well, that was already gone, and the, the pine trees around it was already gone, and, and I, whoa. So that was in August. Then they ran in, posted their bond. And then I inspected it and, for phase two, and everything was great. And then, and all of a sudden, it wasn't anymore. So they, they did a really good job with phase two, once, once they got, you know, they're, they got that beautiful parking lot in, and everything looked so great. I was very surprised to drive by one day and see this enormous pile of, uh, fill there by the road. And there's a reason it appeared. I said, why, how did this appear out of nowhere? And, John, do you want to explain how that pile appeared one day?
The large pile?
Yes.
Oh, that was on the plan, but I don't think, uh, it was closer to the road than anticipated, than what they anticipated.
Not that size?
Yeah, it was supposed to be back over here.
And because they found, or you want me to talk about? They, or maybe Greg should talk about it, because you guys found the soil was, um, no good under the, where the building, the building addition was supposed to go. Is that correct?
Frank Ferriola from President, Milestone, the, the, the stockpile of soil was to be used in the new addition to bring the grade up to where we had to bring it. We, we did our best to keep it there as long as we could and contain it.
You gotta use the microphone. You gotta use the microphone.
Just pull it to you. How's that?
I think that's a better. Pull it to you.
Well, when we were ready to use the soil, we, we actually had a test done to it. It was, it was determined it was unsuitable for structural fill. And we immediately got rid of it at that point. We, we had felt that we were going to use it when, when Erin did come and, and voiced her concerns with the pile. You know, we, we had a meeting, we said we were going to be using it within a two-week period. We caused some bad weather, and then when there was some site issues that allowed us not to be able to use it in two weeks. And, and that, along with it being unsuitable, I decided just to get rid of the soil, which we did. Um, the, the permitting part, um, back in, on phase one, back in July, um, my site contractor took out a demolition permit to take the house in the barn down, July thirtieth to be exact. Thirty-first of July, we did demolish the house. We started, we put our silt fence a- around the perimeter of the site, and we started doing some excavation for the parking lot. Um, we contacted Water and Soil Authority on August twenty-sixth to see if they wanted to do any inspections on the infrastructure that we had put in. They, they told us they did not, but they asked us to contact planning and zoning. That's when the bond issue was brought to our attention. The bond issue was brought to my attention on August twenty-sixth. On the twenty-eighth, I posted the bond. I, I wasn't trying to shortchange it. I, I didn't, I was not aware I had to post a bond. Um, and then we got into, um, we had a site visit from Erin on August thirtieth. Uh, we really had no comments. At that point, everything was fine. Um, and then it brought me into September third. Uh, we were told that we needed to post a fourteen thousand dollar bond with planning and zoning, which we did. And then Roland posted a ten thousand dollar bond with the Water and Soil Department. So the bonding was taken care of, you know, by September third. Um, erosion control on phase two, um, we did not start phase two until I could turn the parking lot over. Uh, I had to switch parking lots. So what we did was on phase one, the new parking lot, that was turned over to Roland, um, on November fifteenth. We started erosion control on November eighteenth. That lasted till the twenty-second, and that being silt fence around the whole perimeter, construction fence as well. Um, and then we started excavating that site on December twelfth, I believe.
That is correct.
On December twelfth. And then we had a meeting with, with Erin, and we discussed, you know, the sediment basin, which we did not do off, at, at the beginning, there were some issues with having too much of a stockpile in one area. It was in a tough spot. Um, but, you know, we, we now have it installed, um, with the sediment trap, like Greg said, by noon tomorrow, it's a hundred percent. We do daily monitoring of silt fence, um, sump basins, sediment traps. Everything's monitored constantly and repaired as necessary, or cleaned out as, as necessary. It's detailed in our daily job reports. That's, that's where we are right now.
So what was the reason that the sediment basin didn't go in till way later?
A little better on that behalf, Ray.
Was there a reason for that?
It took a bit of time to prepare the site. There was a, what we call a till layer of soil that is unsuitable for structural, uh, use on top of the site. So in order to be able to contour the site and have any water head in that direction, uh, the infiltration basin kind of made, unfortunately, took a backseat. So the, the, the bigger issue, there was no, there was no erosion issues on this phase two site, by the way, just to be clear. Erosion issues and, and the problems that we have related to the stockpile, which at this point has been long since removed. So, um, at this point, you know, it, it's behind us. We, we take, uh, it's very important to us. Erosion control in the town of Wallingford, and we, working with, with, uh, John in the town, you know, moving forward. Um, it's going to be exactly like you need to see it.
All right, you got anything else, Erin?
Oh, so it's up to the commission if you want to, um, have them apply for an after-the-fact modification to permit, or just be satisfied that we're now on track. Um, I guess the appreciable difference in terms of the plan would be that third driveway, but that third driveway is going to go away. As the team just stated, it's going to go away when, gosh, two months or?
No, I, I'd probably say by middle of summer. Um, our plan there is to get the, the, the building framed up, and then immediately get onto the, the, the site, the parking lot, the new parking lot, get, get rid of that area, uh, that, that driveway, so that we're able to, uh, seed, uh, quickly and, and get the site under control. That's our plan. So I would say mid, mid, late summer, it would be gone.
Does that construction driveway have a construction pad with two-inch stone?
It does.
It does.
It does, we do.
And it's maintained?
Yes.
It's not washed over?
Daily.
Daily?
Daily.
And again, we, we didn't create the driveway. The driveway was there. Roland Technologies will now allow us to have the amount of construction traffic coming through their business driveway.
Yeah.
Through an anti-tracking pad into their site, their, their, their corporate image is, it's, that's not okay. And so this third driveway, which was an original driveway and existed, we then installed a tracking pad and are utilizing.
Plus they have a lot of traffic daily, a lot of tractor-trailers in and out. It would really, I think it would have created more of a problem
No question.
if we did it.
We're, we're trying to separate from the public.
Having this explained to us and pointing out that this third driveway is in the middle. It's not near a wetland, it's not near an upland, it's not, it's not affecting the, uh, retention basins or the sediment control basins. I think it could be classified as just a construction, construction modification on the job, not necessarily a modification to the permit, field change, I guess that's the word, rather than modification. So, and, and everything else they're doing is, is satisfactory to Erin.
If, if.
What do, go ahead.
I guess, I'm looking at the notice of violation that was issued, and there's, oh, gosh, maybe fifteen items that they were directed to do, and I was just scanning to see, making sure they did all the requests in the notice of violation. And, um, maybe there's two we could highlight. One is the sign to be installed for the emergency spill.
We, we have a DEP sign on our job trailer. I believe you want one on the building, correct?
That was a condition of the original approval.
Okay, so that is, that is being taken care of, I believe, by one of Roland's, uh, project managers.
And, and, and not under our control.
Yeah.
Quite honestly.
It's being.
It's a Roland item.
I think it's, yeah, because I can't attach their building.
Okay, what else, yeah?
And the other one was in the new parking lot, there was an infiltration unit, and that was going to be vacuumed out?
That, that was, uh, that was vacuumed out. I want to say two weeks ago. I don't have the exact date, and it's monitored once a week. Just make sure the sediment, uh, doesn't build up. As soon as the sediment builds up, we have Mick back come in and, and, and take it.
Keeping in mind, at this point, there is no sediment.
Yeah, there's no sediment at this point. We cleaned it out, and it's been, it's been working properly.
All right, then they've met all the directives, um,
Okay, all right. Okay. So we have to deal with the violation letter first? Uh, let's see. I think, I'm trying to figure if this is, uh, if, uh, do you want to eliminate the violation? Is this violation eliminated? The violation?
Oh, that's interesting. Um, I was just, really, we have to decide about do we, should they apply for, uh?
I don't think they need to apply when
Okay.
looking into this.
Um.
But I think they, they need, if this violation letter, if, if we're going to vote on, um,
Violation.
What's, what's the right term? Closing the violate, violation letter?
Um, release, release the violation.
Letter has been satisfied?
Correct.
And in the same breath, it's going to, you're going to give them, uh, approval to remove the sediment fence around the Roland, uh, sign?
Okay.
Yes? You said yes?
I think it's already removed, isn't it?
It has, it has been removed. I think that based on our last meeting with Erin in the office here at the town, we did decide that on an interim basis until this meeting, the silt fence and it's a, it's a very small footage.
Okay, let's just take a vote on whether to, uh, based on Erin's comments, uh, they have satisfied the violations that were in the notice of violations. The letter is satisfied.
Yes, they have. I would say that they have, yes.
So, uh, we're instructing you to take that off our notice of violation list. Or our violation list.
Um, so say the notice of violation, um, is released.
All right, released, satisfied, the violations have been satisfied. Okay? Does that need to be a vote?
Yes.
Is there, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the note of, notice of violation on, um, application 8018 dash 12.2 is released.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I just have my question.
Thank you.
Hang on a minute, hang on a minute, everybody. Erin, I'm, uh, wonder, why did you contact them and tell them the, the third driveway wasn't supposed to be there and there was some, uh, concerns you had and they didn't respond? Why did the, uh, notice of violation go out? Because isn't it usually protocol, you'd contact them and if they don't, uh, acknowledge your request, then we go after them with a violation letter? I'm not sure why.
Oh, it went out because sediment-laden flows were flowing into our catch basins on Barnes Road from the giant stockpile. It went out because the giant stockpile was located on town property and you're not supposed to do that. Um, and it went out because on the western side of the site, there was no stormwater control. The sediment-laden flows from that part of the site were just going directly into the catch basin and into our storm sewer system in Barnes Road. So that's, it was all of the above, so.
So you go by there to go to Park and Rec Center and you've been by there numerous times. You didn't notice the big pile out front by the road or you didn't notice the mud on the side of the road going into the catch basin? That's what I'm trying to say. If there was, they were opposed to doing what needed to be done, I could see them being here tonight. But I don't, I don't see why they're here tonight when we could have rectified this with your professionalism and their acknowledgement of it and doing what you asked them to do. Did I miss something here?
Um, yeah, it took, it took, I don't know how many weeks to get everything to move. It was pushing, I was pushing. Yes, and planning and zoning was pushing to, we were pushing to get, because they had this huge stockpile. What are you going to do with it? It's enormous. So it took them a while to deal with that, you know, and they shored up, you know, it breached and it would shore it up and it'd breach. You know, the winter, it was the winter and, you know, and rains, we got a lot of rains and that didn't help them. It got too wet to move. I mean, there was a series of problems. But we got it under control. It took a few weeks.
Okay. Okay, all right, you guys all set?
Thank you very much.
All right, anything else to come before us tonight? I want to obtain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.